Meeting to order, this meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Daily Record and/or the Star Ledger of Morris County has been delivered to the township clerk and has been posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office and at each of the school buildings in the district. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Deluna here.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Cadd.
Here.
Mr. Napoloni.
Here.
Mr. Capello, since his regrets not making it, he is currently traveling on business.
So, Mr. Napoloni, would you mind moving us into executive session?
Sure. I know we're now in executive session according to Section 88 of the Open Public Meetings Act. Terms of this close session to be discussed...
Legal personnel negotiations.
Legal personnel and business sessions will be developed for public use. We need commentary on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Deluna. And yays for executive session?
Yeah.
Any nays? Abstentions? All right, at 7:01, I move in executive session.
Flags are on.
All right, at 7:35, we are out of executive session. Everybody can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the flag of the British Empire, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
He's got to go back to kindergarten. He's got to go back to kindergarten.
All right, first thing we have is a special presentation from Mr. Forte on HIV-EVVRs report.
Would you like the lights out?
Will it be better if the lights are out for you?
Probably.
Okay.
If I can figure it out?
No, I'll get it.
We don't have the key.
No.
It's good. We're good. We can make do.
If you get the key, I think it's all right.
We're okay.
That's okay.
This is our three times a year update on HIV. This update will be all HIV incidents from July 1st all the way through now. And this year, we had substance abuse and weapons, zero reported cases; harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We had five confirmed HIV cases and 15 investigations; zero incidents of vandalism; four incidents of violence; we had two fights, two simple assaults; action taken, the police were notified zero times; police complaint, zero times; in-school suspension, two; out-of-school Next case, we have our vandalism report. We had zero instances this year. This just shows you in a different way, just to show you the three-year history. Still had no weapons or substance abuse issues throughout the year, throughout the years. Five instances of HIV seems to be every year for the last three years. So, we've provided throughout the district 53 trainings and 114 programs on character ed, HIV, anything along those lines. We had teaching and learning, relationships, community engagement, physical and emotional environments, morale in the school community, and parental support. Our grade for the 14-15 school year, I report that because the 15-16 school year grade won't come out until next year, but the grade for 14-50 was Lakeview, 93.5 percent; Riverview, 91 percent; and Valleyview, 87 percent. There's a website up there. I posted it. You can get to it from the homepage. It has all district and school HIV information. It will have this report on there tomorrow, and it has all previous presentations, all grades from the state. And again, our numbers were 15 investigations and five instances of HIV. Any questions on any of that?
Do you want more time to tell us what the total number of investigations was last year?
Oh, you know what? I don't have that on me, but I know we substantially went down.
So, we had something like 40 and then it was 5.
Yeah. The number was much more out of sync, meaning like we had 15 investigation and five bullying confirmed. Might have been like 30 investigations and five bullying confirmed. So, we tried to, we changed our policy, we did some more training with our administration, and we got to the point where we are only investigating cases that have the hint of HIV than rather than just anything that comes across our desk.
For the purposes of this report, what is the difference between a fight and simple assault?
It's a, a fight is normally like two-way, and a simple assault is where somebody just beats up another kid or jumps on him or punches him or any of that stuff. Could be any physical contact with one person rather than two people going back and forth.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Want to go right into that?
Little projects update. So far, the roof projects in Valleyview and Lakeview are working under schedule. Some of the materials have been dropped off already. The Valleyview oil spill, I've been told from our attorney and from the company that been hired by the insurance company for the oil company that spilled the oil back in 2000, that that's on track to move to. The Valleyview media center's been cleaned out, and we're getting ready to start the next phase, which would be flooring. The Lakeview water infiltration project will be getting underway this week or next week. The windows, it's a pretty big process. We're pretty close to starting that. We have several windows in the district that do not open and close properly. When this project is done, all windows will open and close properly. The lead project, we have the architect is working on the plan. They will have something to me by the end of this month on what their recommendation is going forward. And the bus garage project with the architects and engineers on the structural component of the front of the building due to the fact that the pillars holding up the garage have some rot, some damage, that we should have tomorrow at noon, I was told. Valleyview graduation had a great turnout, had a lot of great compliments from family members and friends about how it was run. And the closing up of schools went well. All the students had, seemed like they had a great year. We all got around to see everybody. And obviously, people are happy the school coming to an end too, but it seemed like a great ending.
All right, good. All right, Dr. Cullis, Assistant Superintendent, comments?
Sure. The summer learning assignments have been posted on the website at the elementary schools. They were also given in hard copy, and the middle school was sent electronically, the reminder of what the choices are of their books, as well as an optional program with Ten Marks. This year, we were not given the choice of it being provided for free, so there is a cost to us at $5 per family or per student. So, we are asking parents who are interested just to contact, the information is on the website. You can email me directly at scullis@denvilleboard. And as soon as I get my roster of students that are interested, then I will send the login for those families. We did start the Summer Literacy Institute today. We have over 210 seats registered for, so, of different workshops. And today was Google, the first day of our Google training. So, it was a great turnout, great responses by the staff members that attended, and we have a very full day for the next three days, full day tomorrow and the next two days after. This concludes the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Sandy, Damaris, Business Administrator, comments?
No report.
No report, great. All right, so, it is at 7:44. I'm going to open for a public comment. Seeing no comments, I'm going to close public comment at 7:44 also. Moving along, Mr. Luer, could you move us through Old Business?
Okay, I would like to move the following as a block, A through C, under Old Business. That is the Treasurer of School Money and the Board Secretary of Report from May. That's item A. Item B is the Education Reports, Student Enrollment, Medical Office, and Hib Report. And C is the approval of minutes from the work session and Executive Sessions 1 and 2 of Monday, May 9th, and the minutes of the regular and executive sessions 1 and 2 of Monday, May 23rd.
I'll second.
Mr. Cass. Questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I'm going to, I need to abstain on regular session and executive session, minutes 1 and 2 on May 23rd, but yes to everything else.
Yes.
Ms. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, but I need to abstain on all of the May 9th minutes for executive and regular meetings.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Okay. That should pass, right? Because only May 9th and May 23rd.
Yes, 23rd. 23rd and 9th, 9th. This is May 9th, this is May 23rd.
Okay, moving on, Mr. Capello's not here, so, Mr. Napoloni, would you mind moving us through Personnel, please?
Sure. Unless there are any objections, I'd like to move one through seven in the regular agenda and then item A in the addendum.
I'll second.
On that, you'll find some step movements, some moving of classroom costs, some new hires, some maternity leave replacements, some resignations, and some other stuff.
I have a couple of just quick comments. First of all, congratulations to Mr. Farber and Ms., and I'm not going to probably say her name correctly, but Ms. Mizinski, for achieving a higher degree and moving across the guide. Congratulations to both of them, that's a big accomplishment, so, always like to see those on the agenda. And then, obviously, we hate to see resignations, but Ms. McCabe is resigning, and I happen to know that she is moving, so it's not a resignation. We rarely see resignations, thankfully, through this district that are leaving for other opportunities, particularly lateral transfers, but she's moving out of state for an opportunity for her husband, so, wish them luck. And obviously, a bunch of movement as we usually see at the end of the year going into next year, so, thank you to the administration for moving quickly on a lot of these hires.
One other item of note is the memorandum of agreement.
Any other questions?
Just point of information on number seven. It's a one-year agreement so that the support staff and the teachers are in sync for the next round of negotiations, like a year from next year. It made sense to sort of sync up the two unions. It's one union but two contracts, so we're going to have one session a year from now.
Excellent. Thank you to the negotiating committees on both the DSSA as well as on the board. I know it puts a lot of time and effort, but much appreciated and glad to see this one is agreed upon. Anything else? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, and I abstain on the addendum A1EE. Yes for everything else.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes. Yes, but I would like to abstain on numbers five and six.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Can I just, for a point of information, note for people in the audience that although you see staff members being hired with the same last name as board members, they are not in any way related to board members?
That is correct. Thank you.
I'll call you last.
What's that?
I'll call you last.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. For instruction and program, Ms. Lindsay, would you mind walking us through?
Yeah. If anyone has any objection, I would like to move to the bottom two six of the block. They include leadership training for the administrators this summer, and having Valleyview participate in the America's Battle of Books, which is a very exciting thing for Valleyview this year, discarding books, and purchasing new textbooks, and along with field trip requests, and approving the revised Comprehensive Equity Plan and Action Plan required policy changes.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Luer. I did want to note that I asked Mr. Forte about the discard of the books, so, they look extremely high on some of them, 2,500 books and 2,350, and he explained that some of these books have multiple editions, so it's physically how many books, not the actual, like, something might have eight or 12 in a year or so. It is that many, but it's, there's a reason for it, let's put it that way. It's not, we don't have 2,500 of the same, I guess, edition, so to say.
That is correct. It is, the series has 12 books.
Yeah.
So, like, if you think it's a big fat textbook, but really it's broken down into each chapter is its own book.
Got it.
Anybody have questions about the Comprehensive Equity Plan? We had to do a revised one due to the fact that a couple of our policies that apply to this have not been updated due to something going on with Strauss ESME, but they will be done, so we have an action plan now to correct it. Pretty much everybody who uses Strauss ESME is in the same exact situation.
Any other questions, comments? If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
All right, policy revisions. Mr. Cass, would you move us through policies?
Sure. I would like to move motion number one, that we adopt the following policies. We have all of them down here as a second reading on the page nine. And then on page 10, we have harassment, intimidation, bullying, and employment of support staff as first readings, and the rest of them are second readings before adoption.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Napoloni.
Only because of Don's enthusiasm.
There's nothing more exciting than making a motion for policies. You made my year. I think this is the first time I did it this year.
I try to help. Any questions, comments? We've seen these for a bunch of meetings, so, thanks for, pretty good shape. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
All right, moving right along, Mrs. Deluna, would you mind moving us through Finance, please?
Sure. There's no objections. I'd like to move the very long list of items 1 through 24 on your agenda as a block. Just highlight a few things, you know, it's all the year-end activities, contracts for the next school year. Two things that stand out that are shared service is the Riverview PTA fundraising for the Rocket that's going to, you know, that's exciting, and the mats being split with the PAL, new wrestling mats. Then there's like the year-end plan for cap reserve transfer and maintenance reserve transfer based on all the billings at the year-end, kind of like an annual preparation. And also, the FEMA application would be nice. That was nice. We talked about that last time. I guess that's it.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass.
Can I just, I want to say, I guess, two things. The Riverview PTA, just in my time as Lee is on there, I think has also fundraised for certain projects around the schools, and I think that's awesome. I will say sort of publicly that I always think it's our responsibility as a Board of Education to fund those types of things and appreciate the fact that the Parents Group is going to do that. And then the second one from the PAL that Barb mentioned also, my experience with the PAL, both as a coach and parent and board member, has always been that they are willing and able to do whatever is necessary to give our kids a good, sound athletic experience or education, and they're absolutely fabulous, and very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Napoloni. Any questions, comments?
We have, we have two motions here to transfer unanticipated excess revenue. Is that the right phrase?
Surplus.
Into reserve accounts. When will we know the, when will we know the exact amount? Is that something that we'll have for our, for our next meeting, or will that take longer?
That will be determined after the audit is complete, most likely in November or December.
Okay, thank you.
We should have, we usually have a pretty good idea, though, right?
We have a good idea once we close out the books. Right now, we're still cleaning out a lot of the year-end transactions.
Okay. And kudos to Damaris and the administrative team for moving a lot of, or not a lot, but some expenses from next year to this year, whatever we can, and kind of balancing what makes sense on going to reserve as well as moving projects up if possible. So, thank you for doing that. Any other questions, comments? If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, except on motion one, I need to abstain on check number 67922, and I'd like to abstain on motion 16 until...
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
All right, and back to Mr. Cass. Would you move us through Buildings and Grounds, please?
Yes, I would like to move that we approve dual use of educational space at Lakeview School and Riverview School. And we also approve Cashman Landscaping to do the district's grass cutting, fall and spring cleanup for the upcoming school year. And we also, one of will approve the disposition of the old library cells at Valleyview.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Napoloni.
Okay, the only thing, you know, question I had was on the old library cells, is there a, do we look into selling those or donating them or salvaging? I mean... They will, they'll be donated. They're going to be donated? We informed some of the local schools, nobody was interested in them, and we also talked to Habitat for Humanity. Looks like they're going to take it all. Well, that's great. Yep. So, it's better than us throwing it out. Yeah, well, while that, you know, old things like that can get repurposed and find a new home. That's great.
That's great. I know it was mentioned before, but Cashman Landscaping, in addition to being, and most importantly, they were the lowest quote we received, but they have really helped out in a lot of things that are above and beyond just the scope of this agreement and helping out and pitching into the district. It's a local parent in town that owns the company, and Sean has just been great with helping out, so, glad that, glad that he was the lowest quote, and he's really been great for us since we brought him on. Any other questions? Not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
All right, and Mr. Cass, once again, you have the hat-trick tonight. Transportation, please.
All right, we're on to transportation. I would like the Board to approve the following school bus emergency evacuation drill reports here. As you can see, we have one at Lakeview School, Riverview School, and Valleyview School.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Deluna. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Moving right along, Good of the Cause, any committee reports? I think we got them all, but anybody want to add anything to committee reports? Seeing none, correspondence, anybody? I don't think we have anything. We discussed committees a little bit last month. Any other additional discussion on that for tonight?
The other thing I had, we talked about the meeting agenda and the redundancy, the repetition, where you have the work session and then we come back the following week or two weeks later and rehash everything again. So, there was mentioned that we have a policy. I don't know how it was etched in concrete, the agenda that we have to follow. Maybe we could get that policy out for a future meeting or send it to everybody to make comments on. Maybe we could, you know, pare that down.
The bylaw.
A little bit, or the bylaws, right? It's in the bylaws for...
About how we meet.
Agenda structure.
Agenda structure. How we need is the bylaw.
No, I think, are you discussing, are you mentioning just the discussion, the repetition of discussion over work session to regular?
Well, we talked about the committees, the length of the committees, the format of the committees, but we also morphed into a discussion on the agenda, the meeting agenda.
Yeah.
All right, so, we discussed both. So, it was mentioned that the meeting agenda is either policy or the bylaws, like the format and the wording, so, I think we could take a look at that and maybe look to make some changes to that.
We could take a look at it.
Especially on the, you know, on the work session piece, that we need to, you know, read every future motion, have a discussion out of that in work session. Obviously, if it's needed, it's needed, and it should be done, but we could probably spend a lot less time on that, that portion of the agenda to save time.
Okay, we could talk about that for sure. I'll talk to Dino about that, too. Any, anything else?
I personally think that we can always talk about it. I have no problem with that. It is set up right now so that we do exactly what we happened to do tonight, which is we spent all our time discussing everything at the work session, which is the point of the work session, and then people have time to mull over what everybody else said. Tonight, we basically just voted with no discussion because we had it at the last meeting, so...
Yeah.
I didn't find it to be done tonight.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, this month worked like it should, but it doesn't always.
It actually worked. No, usually it doesn't, but...
This time, but this month worked exactly the way it should.
This one was an example for why it was set up this way.
Yeah.
I mean, frequently, we have stuff added to the, added to the agenda that we don't, I mean, we don't discuss everything at the work session, and then again, now.
Yeah.
Sometimes the stuff comes up in between and it gets put on the agenda.
But anyhow, we can, I have no problem with everybody reading the bylaw and looking at it and having a discussion.
I'll add it to Friday's report, which will probably be tomorrow because I'm on vacation from campus, or it'll be at the next report. Yeah, I think it's going to end up being at the next report.
That's fine. I don't think we're...
But I think that the idea, Don, is very well taken in that we could expedite our meetings here if we are not repeating the same things over again, so, yeah.
We could probably expedite our meetings by not repeating.
We could probably expedite our meetings by not repeating.
By not showing up.
In the concept of moving our meetings along, any other, what is the good of the cause?
No.
Okay, at 8:04, I'm opening for a public comments. Seeing none, I will close public comments at 8:04. Any other board comments? The only thing I wanted to mention was, I was at the Valleyview graduation on Friday, and the valedictorian and salutatorian were, the speeches were just phenomenal. So it just proves the high level of students we have in this district, and the teachers that assisted them with those speeches, and the parents that helped, so all around, great graduation and fabulous speeches from both the salutatorian and valedictorian. So thank you for everybody involved. Any else? Seeing none, we do have need for executive session. Number two, we will not be voting after we come out. So, Mr. Luer, would you mind moving us into executive session for Personnel?
I move to convene an executive session in accordance with Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss personnel, correct?
Correct. Personnel... And negotiations. Yes, and negotiations.
Personnel and negotiation issues. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Yays?
Yay.
Nay's? Seeing none, abstentions, none. At 8:06, we are in executive session.